Right to free speech, including everyone's right to speak at this meeting and to share their views about issues concerning our city, but we can be more productive by being civil and respectful toward one another in this meeting. Finally, I ask that speakers bear in mind that comments will be limited for each speaker, and I encourage everyone to refrain from duplicating comments already made by others other than to note that you agree or disagree with the prior comments. In order to preserve the meeting decorum, council and staff will not respond during public comments. Any council comments or questions to staff may be addressed during the council closing comments. That brings us to public comments on matters not on the agenda. And once again, just a friendly reminder, if you would like to speak on any particular item, we're now coming to public comments on non-agenda items, but if anyone would like to speak, we do have those golden rod speaker slips over on the tables by the door. Just fill one of those out for whatever particular item you'll be speaking on, submit that to our bailiffs, and we'll make sure to call on you when we get to that point in the meeting. Each speaker will be allowed a total of three minutes to comment on any and all items which are not on the agenda, which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. We will now take public comments on non-agenda items. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak on non-agenda items?
We have two speakers.
Okay, let's go ahead and call those up.
Okay, we have Candace Thomas, followed by Daryl Terrill.
Good evening, Ms. Thomas. Yes, right up here.
Good evening, everyone. So tonight I'll be speaking on behalf of the Moreno Valley Historical Society, and we thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Candace Thomas, and I'm currently serving as our president. Myself and members of our board are here tonight to introduce the society to our mayor, council, and city officials, or reintroduce, for those of you who may have already heard about us. We're a nonprofit organization, and our purpose is to research, preserve the historical and connected artifacts of Moreno Valley, and to share those and educate citizens about the history and artifacts of Moreno Valley. As our group expands, we want to fill you in on some things we are proud of recently. We've expanded our board with some valuable members and acquired several new members to our society, and even a couple of business members. We've partnered with local businesses to establish a monthly cruise night and dine-in fundraiser where we connect with lots of community members and their rolling historical treasures, and of course, encourage shopping and dining in Movel. We've sponsored a street through the Beautify Movel program, partnered with the Moreno Valley Unified School District and their History Day competition, and are even supporting in the county level this year. We've partnered with the Moreno Valley Library Iris Branch in their effort to, I'm sorry, in an effort to help fulfill our Movel Stories Initiative. We have a few displays in city buildings for public viewing. We're proud to announce we've gained over 1,000 new followers on social media in the past year, and we currently have over 63,000 followers on our Facebook group page, which we encourage anyone to take a look at if you ever want to brush up on Moreno Valley history or read some awesome stories. We have a newly established Instagram account with a growing following, and something we're most proud of is we've continued to hold educational presentations for our community and members, and it's something that has continued since the Historical Society established in 1984. We have an upcoming presentation set for March 19th on the history of fire prevention in Moreno Valley, which is being presented by Cal Fire, and we'd like to invite each of you to the presentation if it fits in your schedule. It will be held at the Edgemont Community Center from 5:30 to 6:30 PM, and we'd love to have you there. And if it's okay with y'all, we can provide you with more information and details via email of our upcoming events. Each of our endeavors allows us to connect with people, provide historical informative information, preserve our history, and we're looking to expand, make more connections, and hopefully eventually gain the knowledge, input, and support of our city council. Mayor Cabrera has generously accepted our request to meet and discuss in further detail who we are, what we do, and what we're hoping to grow for our community, so we thank you for that. And we're grateful for the opportunity to speak tonight and looking forward to your input, support, and ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to confirm that event, thank you for the invitation. That was 5:30 to 6:30 at the Edgemont Women's Center, and what is the date of that event?
Sunday, March 19th.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Okay, the next three speakers are Daryl Terrill, Sarah Lidle, and Christopher Baca.
Good evening. My name is Daryl Terrill. When AB 1482 became state law, it was supposed to protect our residents against no-fault evictions. Even with these protections, more of our residents continue to find themselves at the receiving end of eviction notice and homelessness. However, under AB 1482, we can enact an ordinance that is more protective than AB 1482. It has to be more protective than, as I said again, 1482. If it does, our ordinance will supersede state law. This is what I'm bringing to the table tonight. I'm submitting into the public record a proposed residential tenant protection ordinance. Its aim is to protect our residents from eviction through no fault of their own. This proposed ordinance goes a step further than them AB 1482 by imposing stricter requirements on those pursuing no-fault evictions. One of those provisions stipulates that apartment owners must pay tenants relocation fees up to two months' rent. State law exempts 15 years or older, or younger, I'm sorry, but this proposed ordinance applies to all apartments. Also, this proposed ordinance exempts an owner living on a property renting no more than two units or bedrooms. In addition, other disordinance, tenants who get an F-fault eviction notice will be given more time to remedy their violations. Currently, there is no requirement to allow a renter to fix an issue before being served an eviction notice beyond the minimum state noticing laws. Furthermore, it identifies eight more types of landlord harassment than the state, including not allowing a landlord to verbally abuse or threaten a tenant or influencing a vacancy through fraud or coercion and refusing to pay their rent if some of their property, if there's substantial damage, not caused by them, but because the tenant decided, the owner decided not to fix it for whatever reason. This ordinance intended to encourage landlords and tenants to resolve their disputes, but the city will step in in some situations, including appealing to the property owners for fraud, threats, or shutting down a tenant's utilities. So what I'm presenting to you is a first step in providing protection to our residents who live in apartments. We got a lot of people live in apartments. This will hope brings protection to these folks. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Christopher Baca, Sarah Lidle, and Tom Gerald Senior.
Good evening, Council, community, and staff. I'm here to talk about predatory towing practices from a local tow company that the city has a contract with, who is Peppis Towing here in Moreno Valley. If you Google Peppis Towing, you'll see how many communities have been suing this corporation for predatory towing practices and suing many cities because they feel they're not being put in the rotation. I would suggest the city would remove them from the rotation until the lawsuits are settled, but I'm here because it actually happened to myself in my apartment complex in which I have a permit to park, and I've given the management my copy of my DMV. Peppis Towing is going at 3:00, 4:00 in the morning and checking to make sure people are displaying their disabled placard. People forget sometimes. People forget to put them on there, and I believe that was an illegal tow, and they're doing that out of, you know, it's predatory practices where they're just trying to make money. How is it that? I'm not trespassing in that property. I live there. I have a permit to park there, okay? And the management company knows that I have a placard. So this predatory towing company is out there checking to see who forgets to put their placards on there and tow the car away, in which they should have, they have no right to tow these cars away because there's no signage that says tow away. It says fine. There's a fine. Okay, so therefore, at that point, they should have called the management and got an approval for a tow, but the management would have said, oh, he does have a placard, you know, he just forgot to put it on. So that's, you know, it's totally immoral, especially, it's unethical, and, you know, for, you know, I'm just, I'm talking for other people, in case that happened to other people, that they forget to put their placard on and their car gets towed away. That's $400 down the drain just to forget to do this. If you're in a shopping center or anywhere else, sure, you get, you know, your fine, you get your $200, $300 fine, you file a paperwork with the court and with proof, you know, you end up paying $35 or something, and they dismiss it, okay? That's what should have happened, but no. Peppis Towing is illegally doing this. It's very illegal and unethical. Thank you very much.
The next three speakers are Sarah Lidle, Tom Gerald Senior, and Donovan Siddique.
Hello. All right, as you guys know, my name is Sarah Lidle, and I'm here on the behalf of the homeless community, as me being homeless myself. It's been exactly one month since the last time we met with each other, and just a quick little update, so I'm still currently still homeless. I'm staying currently at home stays up until Friday, in which I pray to God that Salvation Army puts me into another place, but then I have 30 days left with them in order to find permanent housing, and as you guys know, that that's extremely hard. I, can you stop? Sorry. So I don't qualify for housing, and that's my biggest issue, is trying to find an apartment complex or find an individual renter who would rent to me and my son. I keep getting the options of renting a room, but I currently have a storage full of things, right? So with that, I can't rent a room and obtain my storage because that's the cost, it's just uncostly. On my last paycheck that I just made, I made $1,594.38 for the month, not a week, not two weeks, but the month. So finances is hard. I did apply to think together, I did get hired, but only as a substitute leader. That's not gonna give me a difference essential cost to sustain living on a monthly basis, right? My food stamps will be cut as of this month because I now make over that cap. So now me and my son really have to go to the food banks and try to pinch our ways to try to get food, and if we don't have permanent housing or a place to go cook, right, how are we gonna cook these items? That kind of like defeats the purpose of going to get food and not having nowhere to cook it, right? So I come again today asking for more resources, asking for the community to help me, asking to put me in a direction, because I have 30 days until I'm back in my car. And I don't know if y'all know, but y'all seen the snow last week? It's cold, right? I'm fat, but I say cold. Like, I'm not trying to be back in the car. I don't know what else to do. Once again, I got a call from HUD others today talking about, you're on the waiting list, but there's nothing that we can do to expedite you, right? And I don't know what that really means, because if I'm asking for help and you're calling me, telling me something I already know, that's kind of pointless, right? Like, I know how it works, but I'm asking, give me some more guidance or put me in a better direction so I can get on my situation, because after the 60 days, who's gonna pay for my hotels? Who's gonna provide us food? Who's gonna provide us our shelter? If I get rid of everything in my storage, how do I get all that back? So, you know, something to ponder about, just a quick little update, just to keep you on your toes. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next three speakers are Tom Gerald Senior, Donovan Siddique, and Michelle Davis.
So yes, somebody enjoying the position here with their mom. Tom Gerald Senior speaking on behalf of myself, and Mayor Cabrera, Mayor Portem Delgado, and council members, members of staff and the public, both here in the chambers and watching at home, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Well, I wanted to continue to acknowledge our increased police activities, you know, patrol and stuff in our area there, it has definitely made a market help, and things have been a bit quieter. We had a rash of incidents right during the holidays, which were problematic, and we're still digging it out from, but so hopefully they'll be subdued. And also, we had some serviced by the fire department recently, and so we appreciate their prompt and thorough service, so maybe a bit of a firebug running around, so we're coordinating with them on that. And then finally, I just wanted to, there was a small air made at the end of the last meeting when Mayor, and I'm not calling the mayor out, it was just an honest air, because you referenced a Tom Corsack in lieu of Mr. Tim Cassett, but it was ironic, I thought that we had Patricia Corsack had served on the planning commission for a number of years, and I don't know if she still lives in the city, she's an active artist, and I didn't know she had a family member or something, so I thought maybe there was some crossover there, but I understand there's gonna be a correction made on that. But I did want to say that the Tim I knew was a jovial guy, and he would wear it as a badge, he'd get a big chuckle out of it, and so, good-natured man, and as I said previously, when he won the Citizen of the Year Award, I thought this is kind of people we should be honoring, you know, very down-to-earth, how-can-I-help-you type gentleman, and I never heard a crass thing about the man, anybody interfaced with him, so I just want to share that, and thank you very much.
The next three speakers are Donovan Siddique, Michelle Davis, and Stephen Figueroa.
Okay, let me get those three minutes. If you want to put another one on there, that'll be great, too. All right, good evening, Council, Mayor, and staff. You guys are doing a really great job. Just got back from the Dominican Republic. I loved it, only to come back to snow, which is really not good. But first of all, what I want to talk about is you are invited to the open forum on Thursday, March 9th, 2023, at the Edgemont Community Center from 11 until whenever with Councilwoman Santa Cruz, and please, especially if you're in District 1, please come out if you can to voice your grievances, meet your council member, and see what is going on in the city. So this is something that I think is very important. Of course, I'm gonna be there, hopefully, nothing happens to me while I'm there. So please come out, and that's gonna be Thursday, March 9th, 2023 at 11, so, which is kind of weird because most people are at work, but anyway, but we'll get it out there. Some of the things I want to talk about also, too, is the city app. Now, when the snow started falling, I started getting a few calls from my neighbors and stuff about issues that had to do with the, you know, oh, they're panicking this, or maybe this is over that. People, please, download on the app, on the Play area iPhone or the City of Moreno Valley, and you will see the app there, and everything you need in regards to support from the city is there. If you want to report something anonymously, you can do it there. Trust me, I do it. I do it very well, so. And also, while I was in the DR, I want to say that I was watching a lot of the council meetings and the planning meetings via YouTube, via the internet, so there's all kinds of reasons, if you are a citizen of this city, and I know you guys are commuting and making that good money, oh God, that good money, but you can still be engaged with the city and what's going on and how, you know, we're doing things over here. There's a lot of projects going on behind the scenes that I think a lot of people would be interested in to know. Staff doesn't get enough credit for bringing those projects to the City of Moreno Valley. And last but not least, I want to give a special shout-out. We always talk about our law enforcement, which is great, our law enforcement's great, but we never really talk about our future law enforcement with the explorers and the sergeant, whoever runs the explorers. You guys do a great job, and let's give them a round of applause, because these guys come here and watch our foolishness as we do what we're supposed to be doing. And Mayor, again, it's a new regime, it's a new thing so far. What you guys are doing is great, Councilman Bernard, all the new staff, again, you're doing great, you've got great council up there, you've got great advisors, continue to use those and move the city forward.
Thank you.
The next three speakers are Michelle Davis, Stephen Figueroa, and Luis Palomeros.
Good evening, all. Good evening, Mayor, and the staff and the rest of the joining committee. As you all know, it's been a long time coming. You know, when I came out here to Moreno Valley, I came with my foots on the ground, my feet to the ground, you know, knocking down doors, never giving up, persevering, doing everything that I needed to do in order to bring this, my program, A Better You, TTAG, stands for Terrific Teams, Terrific Teens Achieving Greatness, and with the help of the Building and Safety and the Planning Committee, I was able, like I said, to make sure that I was able to get my certificate of occupancy, and everything from there just started to flourish. I end up joining the Chamber of Commerce, so I was able to go and be welcomed in and aboard, so I'm just want to invite everybody that could to come out to the ribbon cutting as a mentoring intervention and prevention youth program, and I would like to invite all that can come out on March the 15th at 11:30. I know it'll be everybody's lunch break, and believe me, I have great food, not snacks. I have a person coming out from Sacramento, one of my daughters, that's a traveling chef that's gonna cater the event. Make sure you bring your raffles, because I'll be, and your business cards, because I'll be raffling off beautiful gifts to people that bring their business cards, as well as the Unified School District. I'll make sure that, you know, I pull from different schools to make sure they get three free enrollments for children that will come and be a part of that, as well as bring your cash for the fundraiser, because I'll have beautiful gifts for those that does that as well. I do have a flyer, so, you know, if anyone is interested in coming and seeing the vision that God has given me to come and bring this great program to this community, I'm all open for the support, the love, and the volunteers that someone would love to pour in to youth, and not only youth, but to parents like the young lady there that is dealing with homelessness. And, you know, just sometimes, I've been there, and I had a baby, and I step in a car at the age of 16, and, you know, it's just sometimes you gotta leave outside of your region in order to get those services until they do come into the community, and I know that you all are working hard and diligently to make sure that you guys do are in a position to provide those services, but I do know, based upon your age, some people in Los Angeles that would be willing to help you. So God bless, and I look forward to seeing you all there.
The next three speakers are Stephen Figueroa, Luis Palomeros, and Bob Palomeros.
Good afternoon. Steve Figueroa with the Inland Pirate Latino Coalition. I come, I heard somebody earlier speak on Peppis Towing, that's one of the reasons I'm here. If you don't have a copy of the litigation, you should get it, and their predatory practices toward Latinos and African-Americans that is occurring. This business practice is now being investigated by the state attorney general, was off, and if you have a contract with them, you need to investigate if they're doing it in your community, and this should be made public for your citizens and your voters here to see if their car is being illegally towed, including having spotters there, which is illegal, to see if somebody's illegally parked when they're not illegally parked, when law enforcement hasn't even called, or the management hasn't called to have the car tow away, to unilaterally tow the vehicles. Now, who are these people? I have, you know, got the lawsuit, they have a list of names and people, something you really need to look at to make sure they're not doing it in your city. Why? I'm an advocate, like Victoria Baca West for children with disabilities. So these cars belong to families with children with disabilities, to people on unemployment, to homeless. This means somebody couldn't get to work to pay their taxes, somebody didn't have a place to sleep that night because of their practices and the millions of dollars they're taking out of our community, and you know what? Even when they do it legit, they don't put nothing back in our communities, they don't donate to the local charities, they're getting filthy rich. I know the same thing, they're investigating in Cucamonga for the same practices and other areas, so we're going around to all the cities in the IE to say, hey, are you a victim? You need to look at this litigation, but you need to be progressive and reactive in protecting those who have a vehicle, those people of color. He seems the target. You know, I know the guy, he likes to play like victim, like, oh, I'm the victim of civil rights, I sued the San Bernardino City. He's a businessman with a sophisticated lawyer that likes to sue cities, that's the bottom line, you know? Look at the litigation, but if you look at this right here, you need to protect your city. If you have a contract with them, you need to sever it just based on this investigation and what it has in it. Protect your city, you have a duty to do that. Thank you very much.
Next two speakers are Luis Palomeros, followed by Bob Palomeros.
Are the public speakers here?
Luis Palomeros, community activist. Yes, I'm here today because there's a lot of issues going on in our city. I hope we're not gonna have another five-hour meeting. Wow, we've been having some long meetings, and, you know, everybody's gotta go home, everybody's got a job. I know you don't, Cabrera, your job is always on a campaign trail, it never ends. I looked, I heard the town hall, it was all scripted, all scripted, even the questions. One guy asked you a question, and you kind of stumbled, because I guess he got in there some way in the call. Now, I think you were supposed to be at the Arts Commission or the Arts, you weren't there. Come on. And Mark is here, again, he was supposed to be at a meeting yesterday, the what, let me see, the J, one of the meetings, he's not even going. These are the people you put in there. Today, you're gonna appoint and put people on the commissions and on the boards and all that? I hope these people are gonna show up. I hope they're gonna show up. This is your choices, your choices. The mayor that's on the job, mayor training here, you know, you got a whole entourage when you go out there on your campaign trail, you haven't started campaigning yet. You know, you take staff, I mean, this, we need them here. We gotta take care of the hard stuff, not on a campaign trail that's never ended yet. Golly, that was November, aren't we done there? Come on. You're everywhere, you're here, there, everywhere, come on. What are you doing here in the city? You're always on a campaign trail. Get over it, you won. I know you're starting for the next year, I guess you're starting early, but come on, the staff has to do work. We got a lot of projects coming over the horizons. We got a lot of things coming over. We got projects that gotta come in. What are they doing when you have them on a campaign trail? I mean, that's our tax dollars, that's our money, that's our money. Come on. I know you're learning as you go along here, but oh, wow. And another thing, as far as shutting me up, if I'm here talking about anybody, family or whoever, I remember one time, Marigot Terrace, I mean, yeah, Marigot Terrace, your family was out there harassing me, so I brought it up, and you panicked, and you said, oh, you know, like, shut me down. Said, let's not go there, let's not talk about family, but your family has harassed me from day one, and I'm gonna, you wanna walk me out? This is my First Amendment right, where does this stop? Where does this stop? With your family? Last time I was walking back to my seat, and your father's going like this to me, people didn't see it, but I seen it. It's wrong. Can he hold himself to a higher standard? He's the mayor's son. He's the mayor's son. Can he hold himself to a higher standard? And like I said, your wife's approached me four different times, four different times. Teach him, show him, this is my First Amendment right. Like I said, if you wanna walk me out, handcuff me, so be it. It's gonna cost the city money when I do a lawsuit.
Thank you.
The next two speakers are Bob Palomeros and Roy Bellickard.
Good evening, Council. On the opinion section of the Press Enterprise Freedom on the Decline in the Land of the Free, I wanted to first of all thank the two chiefs, tremendous job they always do, and I wonder how many people here in this council chamber are aware that... And I wonder how many people here in this council chamber are aware that there's an integrity unit out of the DA's office that watches Moreno Valley City Council. Just called, uh, I forgot his name, but I've spoken with him. But anyway, uh, I wanna thank Ms. Bernard when we had the last council meeting when they were talking about the 9.1 acres that gentleman wants to turn into a parking lot. It got kind of confusing with so many people speaking about it, but Ms. Bernard in her closing comments, plain and simple and to the point. Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it. Anyway, let's see if I can get this in. Cabrera, I'm wondering if you've completed your ethics classes? Or have you ever read about the First Amendment? The Constitution, what it allows and what, and what it doesn't allow. What it doesn't allow is child porn, defamation, threats, false advertisement, and fighting words. But yet you violated Luis's rights by threatening her because she was speaking about an individual that so happens to be related to you that is sitting there as she's walking from the podium and he's making taunting gestures, but you didn't see that. Perhaps we should put cameras to face the, so we can get the culprits. But, uh, we need to take care of this stuff because, you know, we don't need to be here talking about this crap. I don't enjoy it, but I'm gonna bring it up if you do it. You know, you can't even follow your own policy, the rules and, man. I mean, I hear Roy come up here and explain to you and you still, you know, I know you're learning, you're young, you know, you're a young boy. You know, so you need to actually, uh, hold your father accountable too, you know. When he says something and you know, he's out of line, do it. That's all, it's, it's not hard to do. And I guess that's it. Okay, I'm gonna save the K9 quarry for later. Thank you.
Next two speakers, Roy Blackard and Denise Green.
The only BS I need is beer and sunshine. Well, strike that. I came here, so we'll have to deal with the real BS. First off, I wanted to tell the mayor, thank you at least from at least, I want to give you some credit for when you come up here. You are giving everybody a chance to speak, giving them their allotted time. We haven't afforded that in the past, that's a good change, positive change. And I want to prove to the world, I'm not really the mean guy everybody portrays me to be. If you want a preview, and we're gonna be dealing with the budgets and public safety and this big thing, I implore you to watch the public comments at the Riverside County Board of Supervisors meeting this morning and pay particular attention to what I said because it's gonna come up. This is the biggest contract city in Riverside Sheriff's Department. They provide our police services. We should have, and when we're coming up with this public safety debate, and I know Sheriff Chad came out to Valverde when there was a deal, maybe you should come up here. Maybe we should talk about conversations I've had with him in the 14 and 18 campaigns and stuff and get it all out there. Because it came out this week. LA cops agreed with me, what I brought to this council in 2015, to save $35 million on a two-year budget, put more boots officers on the ground, put more public safety, put a safer community in Moreno Valley. And as I said at that, and I want him to deny it, Mayor X at the time said, I'm not gonna do it after he was agreeing to it because RSA was Riverside Sheriff's Association was going to recall him. So what we need is an honest discussion of what's going on. People wanna know, people don't know what the nuts and bolts of this and why things are going haywire, but they have to deal with it every day. That's what needs to change. I don't bring this out to say, to criticize what happened in the past. What I don't want to happen is repeat the mistakes of the past. That should be all of our goals. That should be all what we're striving for. People want things to work. They deserve things to work. That's the tide that lifts all boats. The dissension and the fact biting and the politics will send us deeper down into the BS I'm talking about. But if you really want beer and sunshine, then listen to what I'm saying and put it into action.
Final speaker is Denise Green.
Good evening, Council. I'm only here to speak on behalf of the working homeless community. I am a homeless single mother out here in Moreno Valley. I, I grew up here. I'm sorry, I grew up here. And I only have just concerns about the programs you guys have for just single parents. I didn't weigh down my options for state, you know, them helping me, the shelters are full here. The parking rides are dangerous, the one over here is crazy over there, I wouldn't park there. But I'm having a hard time finding housing and I'm working. I work a job, I'm in night school and it's just, it's really hard to find a place when, you know, the county gives me vouchers for 14 days and then I like figure it out, but I have eviction under my name and I can't find anything. And it's a lot of people out here that works and they're homeless and they're in their cars. And there's a guy in the parking ride over there by Home Depot, he's been sleeping in his car for two years straight. He's been stuck there, he's still there right now. And I just feel like if there were different avenues for funding for some type of housing for people like that at least have cars or are working or trying to get out of homelessness, there should be something for us. Because I have a child and I don't, it's hard and even tonight, I have to go to work tomorrow and I have no idea where we're gonna sleep tonight. And that's a struggle for a lot of working people in the community. And I understand a lot of people choose to be homeless or whatever, but some of us are trying our best to not be homeless here. And I just, I just don't know what steps we can take to just help people that wants help. Because a lot of people want help, but some people don't. But some of us really want the help. And so I thank you guys for providing the stuff that you guys do provide from like the county and stuff like that, but it's not enough, unfortunately. Need a little bit more for single moms out here. So that's all I have, thank you.
That concludes public comments on items not on the agenda, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, Ms. Green, for coming as well. And just want to briefly mention that we did have that study session, but I do plan on bringing an item back so that the council can take action on one of our upcoming council meetings regarding homelessness in the city. So thank you for, for coming out here tonight as well. So that will conclude the public comment.